Some ducks do, right? Some, I think it's a certain breed, isn't it? Cool. That's a good thing. They're supposed to be really good for baking. And they're bigger.
All right, we are live on Facebook.
And we are recording. With the absence of a chair, we do need a motion for a chair.
Motion for Dan Rodden.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One. Motion carries four to one.
We just don't want to do it.
All right, I call this, uh, board meeting for the Village Board of Swamaco to order. It is Monday, the eighteenth. And I'm gonna say it's right on six o'clock. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ward, second by trustee Snyder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries one, two, three, four, five, zero. Let's all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, presentation. We have oath of office for our new trustees. Actually, one current and one new. Clerk Bartolletti.
Judge Rathburn has accepted the, um, appointment to come in and do those oaths. So he will be doing them.
Excellent, sir. Judge.
If, uh, if I could have Michael Snyder, please. Do you, uh, obviously, you want to say, have a sign after?
You better want my pen.
Sure. All right. If you would raise your right hand, please. Aye, Michael Snyder.
Aye.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the village trustee. Swamaco village trustee.
In and for the village of Swamaco.
In and for the village of Swamaco.
In said county.
In said county.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of said office.
Duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right. Come on up, Mike. Mike and Mike.
Congratulations.
It's pretty confusing.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Tomorrow.
So if you would raise your right hand.
That's right.
Aye, Mike Romes.
Aye, Mike Romes.
Having been elected to this office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
In and for the village of Swamaco.
In and for the village of Swamaco.
In said county.
In said county.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
Duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Very good. Very good.
And just so everyone is clear, uh, trustee Romes, uh, will start at the next village board meeting. His term starts April nineteenth.
Thank you so much.
Tomorrow.
All right. Second presentation is five years of service awards. I'm Mr. Kaker, Director Smiths.
Yep, so, uh, we're starting something new this year. Uh, we're recognizing our staff as they get their, uh, five-year increment of work anniversaries with the village. And, um, in April, we have two employees. And so both are actually in the Department of Public Works. So I'll toss it off to our Public Works Director, Andy Smiths. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I definitely don't carry the weight to the judge, but I'll do my best. I'd like to welcome Ken Fisher up here. He's our first recipient tonight. And, uh, we're gonna award him with a fifteen-year, uh, anniversary award for his service here in the village of Swamaco. Uh, Ken's been our public works foreman since two thousand seventeen, started the year in two thousand seven, April, I think.
Yep.
Uh, same month as me, so that's cool. Appreciate all the work he does. Uh, he can fix just about anything. Sometimes he surprises himself. But we appreciate everything he does, and I'm probably the most grateful for who he is and what he does, and being here, and I can't thank you enough. Second recipient tonight is Dennis Van Hulke. And, uh, he's bringing thirty-five years here to the village. He's a couple of years older than I am. Valuable information that and presence that Dennis brings here. I mean, he's seen everything going to ground from, from basically day one, it seems. Um, we, again, value the knowledge that he brings and the information he shares day to day. If something's not written down or in our system, you ask Dennis. He remembers, he's around. Having that experience is just second to none, and we appreciate every kind of stuff as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. And, uh, on behalf of the board, thank you. We greatly appreciate all your work you guys do and keeping our village the way it is. So thank you. All right, resolution two-two-zero-zero-eight. Gary Rosi Roman Rome Mariowski. Rome Mariowski, just a common last name. So I will turn it over to our clerk.
All right, Mike Jameson is here to accept that, uh, resolution. If you just wanted to step up to the table, Mike, that's fine. Resolution twenty-two-zero-zero-eight. A resolution acknowledging Gary Rose Mariowski's dedication to the village of Swamaco and our communities. The Board of Trustees of the Village Board of Swamaco do resolve as follows. Whereas Gary Rosie Rose Mariowski has steadfastly and devotedly served the town of Swamaco as town chairman from nineteen eighty-six until nineteen ninety-six. And whereas he provided exemplary service to the town of Swamaco, having contributed practical and valuable skills as a leader. And whereas he retired from the Howard Swamaco School District after decades of teaching special education and inspiring future generations as their role model, teacher, mentor, friend. And whereas Rosie was actively involved as an athletic coach, track and field official, and announcer for the Bayport High School football games, basketball games, and track meets. And whereas he gave freely of his time, talent, and treasure to the Make-A-Wish Foundation for thirty years to help grant over seventy wishes for local children battling illness and health issues, thus giving them hope, joy, and love to these children through the power of their wish being granted. And whereas he was an active life member of the Howard Swamaco Optimist Club, serving on the Board of Directors and as a past president. And whereas he truly lived and taught by example the optimist creed to make all of your friends feel that there is something in them and to wear cheerful continence at all times and give every living creature a, your, you meet, a smile. And now therefore be it resolved that Rosie left this earth on April third, two thousand twenty-two, and that the village of Swamaco would like to recognize Gary Rosie Rose Mariowski for his faithful service with a commendation and expression of gratitude and hereby make this commendation a part of its official record. Adopted this eighteenth day of April, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a motion to accept resolution two-two-zero-zero-eight?
So moved.
I got a motion by trustee Snyder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Eckert. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Come on up. Five-zero. Yep. Perfect. Again, congratulations. All right. Public appearances. This is a time for the public to address the village board on items other than those scheduled to be on the agenda this evening. Uh, when you come up, please state your name and your address for the record, just so we can get that information down. And, uh, speak clearly into the two mics that are there. So is there anybody that wants to talk about anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move on. The consent agenda. Agenda. Previous minutes of the village board. Four-four, twenty-twenty-two. Municipal court, March, uh, March of twenty-two report. Twenty-two-twenty-three, poll worker additions. Recreational director, April twenty-two report. March twenty-two, fire department, fire department report. And that is it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Eckert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. We're already on the back page. Look at that. Planning and zoning. The Howard Swamaco Historical Society Plan Approval for ma- for moving the Tremble School to parcel SU-dash-one-zero-six-nine-dash-thirteen. Uh, zoning administrator, Dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at about one acre of total area used by the Howard Swamaco Historical Society. Um, that parcel actually was two parcels purchased in two thousand nine by the village. At that time, they were zoned for residential use. Could've had two houses on those lots. The village did combine them later on and also did a rezone. A few years back, we missed the rezone when we purchased it and, uh, but it was rezoned to public lands and institutions. The Historical Society began leasing that property in two thousand eleven. They put much effort into the restoration of the barn, along with improvements on the home that were required as part of the restoration of the barn. So the home really needs to remain there. The bathrooms are part of that approval for that barn use. They had to be remodeled to be ADE compliant in order for that barn renovation to be compliant with state requirements when it was certified by the state. Building code would require a minimum of a twenty-five-foot front yard setback and ten-foot on the side. Historical Society had proposed fifteen feet on the side and fifty-five from the right of way, um, which both would've met those requirements. The school is approximately thirty-six by thirty-six. Although the Historical Society is the one that proposed the site plan, the, the village also has some stake in that. And from a staff perspective, we believe that the northern side of that driveway is the better location and leaving the horseshoe. For other events, should we choose to have a festival, um, flea market, farmer's market, whatever, um, it just is a more centralized location rather than putting a structure in there and then pushing everything to the outskirts and actually better shield the adjacent properties from those activities. There was a question about the water laterals coming up that parcel at the previous village board meeting. Um, we have looked into it. Actually, I think that was, it might've been at the planning commission meeting. I don't remember anymore. We looked into it. They have their own separate lateral. It should come up from Velp Avenue directly into that home, so it should not create any issues. We don't show any lateral coming any further than the right of way along Velp Avenue, so that would not restrict that location. The first phase of this project is to get it here in May on its foundation. From the comments made at planning and zoning, we do believe that they're fully funded for that move and the foundation. And it appears they have enough money to actually do the exterior renovations before the end of this year. The inside would be further, you know, future fundraising activities, but as long as they keep the outside looking good, from our perspective, that's, that's where our concerns are, is making sure that would, um, look decent yet. The use of these buildings will still remain as currently discussed in the Memoranning of Understanding that the Swamaco Village and Historical Society signed a few years back. Your planning and zoning commission motion actually moved the structure back thirty feet from what they proposed. So your motion was eighty-five feet from the road and fifteen feet off of that line. Condition number two was, this was to be the last structure brought onto the property. And then three was engagement by the parties and residents on a revised MOU. From a staff perspective, number two, um, which was to make this the last structure, it's, it really ties the hands of future boards in the village, as was stated in the meeting with the planning commission. Even though it's a ninety-nine-year lease, the Historical Society could dissolve in fifteen years, and where does that leave us? Although it's a long-term lease, there are no guarantees, um, and what would happen to these structures? And if we choose to remove them and, and construct another building for village purposes, would we be restricted from that? You know, based on that motion? You know, what if the structures were taken down by a natural event? Tornado, fire, anything? Historical Society no longer has use for the site. Their, their structures there are destroyed. Should the building want to do, buil- village want to do something else with it? Does this restrict us from being able to do that? And, and that's where we're looking at. We don't want, you know, to tie, tie the hands for fifty years in the future. Or twenty-five should something happen. And then for the MOU, um, we believe that all you need to do is add this structure to the existing memorandum of understanding. We're not increasing ours. We're not changing any of that other language in that MOU, and we just believe that that needs to be updated, adding that additional structure on that MOU. It's your choice to do as you wish, but that's where staff has come from for that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It, one question for you. So if this wasn't this site and somebody was just building a home and they met all the necessary setbacks in our code, we don't really have the right as a board to deny them from putting a building on that facility or on that piece of property, right?
Correct. That's why you have zoning codes.
Right.
If they meet your zoning code, they can do it.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that.
Steve, has there ever been anything in that horseshoe area? I, I, you said that they wanted to reserve that for flea markets and whatnot. Has there been anything in that that would take up that much area?
The pumpkin roll, I believe, was done inside there. I think they did yoga in the park. I'm not sure.
Not that many people to fill up that whole area.
They had a big group out there. I don't know. I'm not sure how mu- I, I know the Brown County, um, Automobile Club, whatever it was, met here for a tour, but they all met on site. How much, I wasn't here, I don't know how much space they took up.
But that, that was years ago.
That was a few years ago, last year? That was last year. I, I don't know how much space they took up. I'm not, you know, most of their events take place either at night or on weekends. I don't know how much they use it. I don't.
And the parking is also in that horseshoe as well, right?
I believe that's where they gathered for that, yes. When they come in, you know, your Halloween event comes in one driveway and out the other where they, again, I don't pay attention to where they set up on, I'm, I'm gone and away from that congestion.
All right. And I did get an update from Minister Kaker about, um, zoning and the zoning meeting. Sounds like there was a lot of good discussion. Lasted about two hours of discussion and back and forth and communication. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Board members, do we want to open this up for public comment?
I'll make a motion to open.
Do, do you want me to read this into the record first?
I think.
President Ben Rossum's.
You can, if you'd like, or we can do it later.
Okay.
That's fine.
Motion to open it up to the public.
I got a motion to open it up for public comment from trustee Eckert.
Second.
Second by trustee Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Um, one of the things I do ask tonight is that if it's relevant information or new information, feel free to come up and share. Just don't repeat information that's already been shared. Uh, I know this board and most people in this room know this project very well, know some of the frustrations about it, um, but yes, feel free to come up and speak if you'd like. And cite your name and, and address for the record as well.
Ruth Lund and Tom Lund. We are twenty-ninety-one Maggie Lane. Our property is right next to lot number thirteen up there. We have attended a few times. And I did write a little something to share with you with some concerns that I heard from planning commission and just a few thoughts. I'm coming before you tonight regarding the Tremble School House. I'm asking that you make sure that we understand the full intent of the building and make sure it will not be a rental building. That is a really big deal to us, that this is basically a historic building, not to be rented out. The, the location. I still believe that the horseshoe makes the best location for this building. We talk about festivals, flea markets. This property is really not an appropriate place to have a large flea market or farmer's market. And I, I hope you all agree. We have homes right next to this. The pumpkin patch is once a year. I can handle that. The people who come and do yoga, they're quiet. It's not a really loud thing. A farmer's market, you schedule that to be every week. That means, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been to a farmer's market, but they can get big. They can be quite a large event. I really don't want that next to my property. I mean, that, that's a concern, and we, we keep talking about all these different things. And so I do believe we need to go back and look at the, um, MOE and discuss what this property's purpose is. I, I go back to the purpose of this property. This was supposed to be a museum to show people. We have a lot of different ideas constantly regarding this property. The other thing I would, so the, where the stakes are right now, the planning commission had a lot of different ideas. Um, and I think it was you, Jason, who actually suggested about twenty feet off of the barn and going where that tree is. Currently, the property is staked in front of that tree, which is still right next to the Monophyle's property, right in their window. If we could move it back a little bit, there is more than enough space to do that. And I have another suggestion that if it's going to go there, turn the building so it faces Velp Avenue and put the stoop facing Velp Avenue with a little walkway into it, which then the property can move over and actually have a twenty-foot setback instead of facing the driveway, the front of the building facing Velp.
Ruth, hold on, just real quick. I'm sorry to interrupt you. The new stakes out there, just so I have reference, are where? I, I mean, I know where they are, but is that twenty feet off?
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet off?
Ten feet, ten feet, five inches from the property line.
The stakes currently are at the proposed location that the planning commission recommended of eighty-five feet off the right of way and fifteen off of the property line. That is based off of the GPS with Brown County. It appears that it's twelve feet off the fence line, which appears to be three feet off of the property line.
Okay.
That, yeah, from a staff perspective, we would recommend bringing in another five feet to the south and make that twenty feet, just because we were using the fence line as a visual and, and it still is your visual and.
All right, I'm good with that. I just wanted a reference point, because we're talking where it is.
You betcha. Um, next, during the planning commission meeting, they talked about bringing the, um, schoolhouse up through Maggie, adding a culvert to the Maggie Lane property. I don't know if anybody is familiar with that property, but that is a steep hill. It's never cut because it's too steep. So in the summer, I have a lot of kids who come up through the driveway on property twelve, go through back by the barn, and then fly off my driveway. I just want to make sure that that culvert is a temporary culvert and it comes out, or that will be a playland after summer school. So, I, I mean, I'm fine if that's where it has to come through, but that we're not keeping it there, that I have great concerns. I mean, I watch them go down my driveway. My driveway's steep. Then, let's see. In addition, I really do think we do need to discuss the memorandum of understanding and come to a formal agreement and understanding of what this property is. Even though we have one, it seems like it's too vague, and I don't want to keep coming here. I don't want to keep doing this. I, I think this is too much gray area for us to really understand the purpose of what this piece of property really is. And again, I, I'm worried, we talk about festivals and different things, and, uh, the horseshoe makes the most sense to me. It keeps it off that line. And, um, I know on one of the websites, the Historical Society said that that was wasted land. Isn't there such a thing as buffers and green space in parks? I mean, like I said, I've been on a park commission for twenty-plus years. We buffer people. We don't throw things right in people's yards or right next to their yards because we can. I understand that per code, this can go here, but can we be respectful? In the memorandum of understanding, Sky read that during the planning commission, and it clearly states all parties need to be in agreement on what happens here. So I hope that you can hear us and understand that we're willing that this is coming, but let us work with you on where it goes and what we're doing with it.
Thank you. Tom?
Okay, yeah. Um, where they're gonna put that culvert, I had asked, uh, our, um, our public works a while back if they could cut down that hill, and they said, no, we can't cut down that hill because of the wires and stuff, uh, what's ba- buried into that hill. So I'm just concerned about them, how they're gonna get that thing up there. And, and I've always been concerned about that, that ditch line because it's not maintained very well. And, I mean, we all maintain our ditches, but the village doesn't cut that and keep that nice and clean because of the steepness of it. So, I mean, as a property owner that keeps his ditch clean no matter what, I, I would expect the village to, to do so also. And, uh.
And went out.
Yeah. And as far as that building, I think it should be moved back somewhat. If it's gonna go on the south, south, on the north side of that driveway, I think it should be moved back even with the house that's there. And also on that memorandum of understanding, the, uh, the commission said no more buildings to come. And I think that's fine. Have it, no more buildings being brought by the Historical Society. If anything else happens, then that's a different discussion. But I don't, I think we should limit what the Historical Society is gonna do, because this isn't a heritage hill. It's on a little over an acre of property, you know? And it's, it's right about budding residential property. So I, I would just think to be, uh, cordial to the neighbors. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you point to where the culvert is? Where they're talking about?
Right, right in there.
Okay.
Andy, is that gonna be temporary? Okay.
My name is Linda Jones. I live at twenty-one oh-seven Maggie Lane, which is lot fifteen. Same concerns as my sister. For me, I'm gonna read the paragraph that Sky read, because I think for us, once that building is there, it's forever. Once you've agreed to those festivals, that's what it's gonna be, and that's what we're gonna live with. The rationale for this memorandum of understanding is to establish allowable and complementary uses that may be undertaken at this location.
that may be undertaken at this location for the enrichment of the community, enjoyment of Howard Swamaco, past history and increased celebratory activities. Both parties agree they shall be complimentary in nature with the residential neighborhood that is close proximity to the facilities. The uses, hours of use and anticipated frequency of use may be modified as appropriate by mutual consent of both parties. I was on that committee. There have been no meetings since whatever the one, the one meeting that we had. So my ask would be, I don't have any problem with the building coming. I agree it should go back. I would like to have more meetings. I would like that we could work together. And I guess my other ask is, we have no buffers. So you're saying, we're going to bring more buildings. We're going to bring, there's a capacity of ninety-nine people that can come in the barn. Now we're saying another ninety-nine in the school. We need some trees. We have nothing. So from two thousand nine, there's not been one tree planted to buffer any of our properties. And I understand that's a budgetary thing and maybe that's a future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Just your name and.
Keep it quick.
Name and address.
I'm with the President of Howard Swamaco Historical Society.
Your, your address.
Twenty-seven forty Tulip Court in Howard.
Thank you.
In our original proposal, we had asked that we bring the building here. I know that we had talked about it three years ago and then we fundraised for that. But as part of bringing the building here, we were hoping to keep it back from the road a ways, but not lose the tree. We've got a large pine tree there that we're hoping to save. And I talked with Linda Jones about that earlier and she had said her mother planted it. So I was hoping that it could be saved.
I don't care about the tree.
Okay. But we were hoping that it could be saved and then it would create a buffer between the barn and the schoolhouse.
Hey, hey. Let them speak. You have a turn to speak. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. As far as bringing the building in on the backside, the culvert to be put in, we're going to work with the village on getting that in and that would be taken back out as soon as we're done. But basically, we just have to get the building in and that's the most economical way. If we come in off of Velp, we're going to lose, each wire we drop there is over fifteen thousand dollars and that's just not feasible. But we do have enough money to bring the building. We've got ice, structure movers out of Two Rivers coming. They're hoping for the third week of May. We're working with a basement contractor right now. They're running a little bit behind because of the wet weather. So that may be a little bit delayed, but we're hoping to get the building here and get it onsite and get it on the basement, put new siding on the outside, make it look nice and move forward with that. Do you have any questions on what we're doing with it?
I, um, it, it hurts me to think that we would lose that tree too. Is there, now, when you're moving it from the back, is it going to fit between the barn and the tree? I mean, would it?
Yes, there's forty-four feet between the barn and the tree.
Setback wise, can we do twenty feet from, instead of fifteen on the north property, north side?
Sure.
Can we do twenty instead of fifteen?
Sure.
Is that, okay.
Yeah. I would like to see it moved like twenty feet forward and ten feet over, you know, from where it is. But from where the stakes are, and that would actually place it more in the center of that area, keep it away from the neighbor, keep it away from Velp and yet allow us the proper drainage around it and everything else that we have now.
For the next door neighbors concerned, I, see, I'm, I'm thinking almost that the fifty-five feet would be better because you wouldn't have to look at Velp.
Yes. When I originally measured, I went from a stake that was, I thought was a property line and I may have been off by five feet or ten.
Okay, but you, you could come twenty feet from their property line. That would not be a problem?
Right, that's not a problem.
Okay.
But for where the stakes are now, I would like to come forward toward Velp and keep it out of the drip line of the tree because I'd like to save the tree because it's been there a long time and I think it's part of the aesthetics of the property.
I think so too. And that, that would be, that's, that's history right there.
Thank you. And we are historical.
Intent. So we talk about intent a lot when we talk about this property and, and what you guys want to do with it. So what is your intent with the schoolhouse once it's there and once it's rehabbed? What's your, what's your final intent?
The final intent is basically, it's an educational facility. So if we bring in the third grade class, they can go in and, and see how things were done back in nineteen sixteen. We can't open it up for like a craft barn or anything like that. That's, doesn't beat the code. There's a lot of things we can't do with it, but basically we want to use it for small public meetings, like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whatever. And we're hoping to bring in the, like, third grade has already come over there a few times, but we want to bring them over more often.
So unlike the barn where it's going to have ninety-nine people, you're probably not going to be more than twenty.
That all goes with the fire code. They've got to tell us how many people were allowed.
Would it be rented?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Okay, so, like, for meetings, for meetings, or it would be for meetings for scouts?
Right, right.
So small educational meetings. I mean, so this is where the intent and, and language can be, I guess, perverted a little bit because now you're renting it. So they, you know, the folks don't want it rented. You guys are going to rent it. You know, then there could be some question about that. So if you, when we do the amendment to the current MOU, we can put in there that you're renting it for educational purposes and that defines it. If we just put, you, you can rent it, that opens up the door. So I just want to, I want to know your intent with that building or what the Historical Society's intent for it, long-term intent, not short-term intent, longer-term intent, and then be able to define some of that within, because we have to write an amendment anyways to the current MOU. So once we do that, we can actually put some language in there that kind of spells out what this, what this building is going to be used for onsite.
That would be a good idea.
According to the MOU though, I mean, it's, I would think it, as long as it's kept within the capacity, the current MOU would still apply.
Yes.
It does, but you can, you can add language within an amendment to make sure that we understand the allowable usage for that particular building.
Would it be fair to ask chief capacity?
Without, uh.
No.
It wouldn't, it's going to be less than ninety-nine, I can guarantee that.
Yeah.
I mean, on my guess, maybe Steve's going to ask some input, but I would say forty-nine. I, I put, like I said, that's taking a wild guess.
Fire department sets occupancy limits on the structures.
Okay.
It's not us. It's not the village. It's.
I, I asked him an unfair question though. He hasn't stepped foot in it.
Some of it's based on square footage. Well, it is based on square footage, but it's based on the type of use. Standing room has a greater occupancy than table settings. So it all depends on how the property is being used that sets that actual maximum occupancy load.
I'm assuming that you guys are bringing some historical items into that schoolhouse to show how, how school is actually conducted back in the early years, correct?
Yes.
And so you're not going to, you're not going to want a party or something like that that, that's set up in the, that the barn is set up for in here because you're going to have artifacts and things like that in this building.
We've got several, I'd say five, six, seven, eight antique desks already that we're hoping to put in there. I don't know if we've got thirty in there, but you know, it's, it takes a while to collect and.
So the more artifacts you put in, the more limited you're going to be with how many people are going to be in.
Yes.
In the usage of.
And probably supervision as well from Historical Society members. I mean, people just won't.
Right. It's the same thing. You know, if you rented out this room to the Boy Scouts, they would have to have a leader here to make sure that they didn't tear it down. I don't think they would, but, but basically, you know, we can't provide somebody. We don't have enough staff. We, we're, we're all volunteers, so. But we basically, if you're going to use the building, the rules would be set. But I know that, like I reiterated before, in the letter that I originally said, we, we're hoping to keep it away from the tree a little bit and away from the neighbors to try to keep the peace. So hopefully that'll work.
How many, how many feet would you say from the right-of-way? Twenty from the lot line, fifty-five was originally proposed and now they're talking eighty-five.
I would say sixty-five. Sixty, sixty-five would be fair from the right-of-way. I'm not sure, but I know when eighty-five, that's a long ways.
And eighty-five's going to kill the tree because that was within the drip line I saw.
Eighty-five is further back than what the neighbor's house is.
And it doesn't honestly sound like anybody likes that spot. It sounds like more of a compromise nobody likes.
Right.
Eighty-five puts it virtually in line with the front of Ann's house, the northern house. Eighty-five puts it fifteen feet into the drip line of the tree. So twenty feet brings it out of that and you should be out of the rut. The major rut anyway.
Anybody else have any questions for? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of, against, just want to talk?
Anne Marie Rybeck, Monophiles, one-two-eight-one-three, Velp Avenue, directly next to the property that we're speaking of. Per the planning meeting on last Wednesday evening, it was my understanding that it was determined or decided that the tree could go. I was specifically asked, am I okay with the tree being gone and placing it there? Would I be okay with that? So that it was out of the line of sight of our patio. Which brings me to the point that it would be really nice if we had an updated map. Currently, the trees that are shown on there on our property don't even exist anymore. So we talk about trees and we talk about historic value, et cetera. Well, the maple tree that still shows on that map was causing problems in pulling things up, pulling the part of the foundation up and had to be taken out. There are reasons that you have to remove trees and the appearance of that property is completely different now. But you don't see that in this. So I guess the point that I really want to go to right now is we've been asked to approve something or you're all being asked to approve something based on a timeline that they've gone off and done planning that we really don't have, we're, we're saying eighty-five feet, sixty-five feet, fifty-five feet. This person doesn't like this. This person doesn't like that. This person doesn't like the tree. Let's go fifteen feet. Let's go twenty feet. Clearly, nobody can agree at this point on a placement and I don't really understand how you could go ahead and say that you approve a position of this because there aren't anybody, I don't hear a single person. I don't hear even the Historical Society agreeing on a placement. I don't hear the other side, which currently with the Memorandum of Understanding, we're all supposed to be agreeing. I also don't see anybody, you know, working together. You know, the weather's been awful. No one's come over and said, hey, can we walk around and see, you know, what would work? Can we do some measurements? Can we, you know, look at things? That hasn't happened. Now, on Wednesday evening, when Steve was taking and using the little.
Measuring tool.
The measuring tool, you were pointing right over the tree and Mr. Zastro asked. And Mr. Zastro's motion, which I wish that, I've looked on the minutes. The minutes are not out there yet. So it was shown eighty-five feet. It was also talked and the motion was made with the Memorandum of Understanding and it was stated to be not level with the front of our house, but level with our back window so that it cleared the line of sight of the patio, which is not being shown on there, which gives it a complete different presentation of what you're seeing. There is no big tree there anymore. So I guess.
We have no way to update that. It's a twenty-twenty aerial photo. They're not going to do a flyover for another couple of years.
I think there is a new one.
You're going to talk to your.
Not another Brown County photo.
You gotta talk to your Brown County supervisor.
So a, anyway, so that was one of my points of contention. Again, the wording, I, I know that he's specific because he looked at me in the audience and said, are you okay with this? Again, the tree, I think, is a mute point. If it has to go, it has to go. If that is the better placement. I, I don't think that a tree that, you know, the other tree was older, but it had to go because it, it was causing problems. Now, this one doesn't necessarily cause a problem, but other trees can be planted and they grow quickly. For example, there's the tree in the backyard, doesn't show either. And it was a sapling from the front tree that flew in the garden and we planted and it's almost as big as the front trees. So my point is they grow fast. So to be arguing over a tree that is not meaningful to anybody other than our family doesn't really seem to matter or seem to be a valid point at this point to me.
Well, I guess I used to be a landscaper and once you were, I guess you always are. And, um.
I love perennials.
That tree does mean something. I, I did see, I did see what the Planning Commission suggested. Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's not just something to be discarded to me and that is history. That is history too. But it's, you're, oh, sorry. It's your time.
So just so we know, Zastro's motion was as follows. Eighty-five feet from the road, fifteen feet off the line, which I would assume would be the north property line. This is to be the last structure was the second. And then the third one is engagement by the Historical Society, the Bill of Swamaco and residents on a revised MOU. So that was the.
Now, is that the written?
That's the written motion.
Okay, do we have his recorded motion?
It's been double-checked. That was the actual motion.
I think a lot of things were discussed that night and said that night, but that was his actual motion. He, in his motion, he didn't mention windows or, he, he said those words, but not in his motion. But there was a lot of discussion on that.
Again, my point being is I don't think that you can move forward at this point with approving this as current. I think that there's still a lot of things that need to be discussed over this and I would like you to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mary? Cite your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Stephan. It's seventeen-sixty-two Condor Lane. It's in Howard. I served on this board for eight and a half years and it was during that time in which this property was purchased. This property was determined that it was to be the historical site. It was also the time when we built the facility. I was also on that original memo of understanding discussion with staff, with board and the family. There's a lot of history here, gentlemen and misses. Some of the things that were mentioned, maybe we should have more park, maybe we should have this. I want to give you a few examples of things that the village and I will say the. of things that the village, and I will say the taxpayers paid, is there was concerns, again, at the fact that there was not any park area. There weren't enough trees. So under Karen Mates' direction as our administrator, she came up with the idea, let's create some park to satisfy the neighbors. So all of you know, there's a beautiful little park right next to the house behind the garage that was designed to accommodate the neighbors. Then, in one of the memo of understanding meetings, there was concern, that they were concerned that the individuals, all those people that were coming here, were going to interfere with their property. So the village made, purchased, and constructed that split-rail fence, and they put it on our property so that if someone, some child had to go to that fence, it was still on our property. Then there were complaints about, and it was on both sides, that all the salvage vehicles that were there next to the barn became a hazard. So the village, again, paid for the high fence. And so many of the things that you have heard tonight have been ongoing during this entire time. It's unfortunate, but that is the reality. But the real reason I came here tonight is for some new information. And I brought with me a book. It's called Champion Trees, as designed by Brown County. It was done by the Brown County Municipal Foresters. Aside from the environmental value of trees, Swamaco is home to some significantly well-recognized and well-documented what's called champion trees. Swamaco has the state's largest jackpine. It's on School Lane, twenty-nine-seventy-fourth School Lane. It has the second-largest red oak on St. Pat's, twenty-six-thirty-two. It has the fourth-largest bur oak in Representative's Rodden's neighborhood. There are three historic white pines in this area. The fifth in the state, the sixth and the seventh largest white pines. One is on Velp, one is on Flintville Road, and one is in the Swamaco cemetery. This pine that is being considered for destruction is a middle-aged, fifty-year-old spruce, and it's worth saving so that it too can become another Swamaco champion tree. In order to preserve any tree, their care has to be that their roots are protected. The circumference of that tree, of the branches, must be protected, and that's called, as our president said, the drip line. There isn't much of a problem to moving that building as proposed to the sixty-five-foot spot. There is plenty of room. It's not encroaching. The Howard Swamaco does have a lease that has the same rights as if we had a home here. We have the right to want, build, and to add. In the family, the three sisters have continually objected to anything that the Howard Swamaco Historical has asked for. One of the things that I noticed is, in the last meeting, there was objection that the building might infringe on the patio as well as the bedroom window. So I took a look. I took some pictures. On the south side of their house, which is there ten feet of right of way, there are two multi-branched trees and two full-size lilac bushes that are directly in front of the bedroom window. I suspect those bushes impede the visual. A little, if the site was moved a little further south, a little bit closer to the road, what would be behind it? What do they have? Do they have a beautiful patio? What do they have in that area? What's the objection? There's a split-rail fence, as I mentioned, that was constructed by the village. The fence is located on village property. There's a large stack of wood, which is leaning against the village property on the landowner's side. There's a large trailer, enclosed trailer that is parked there. There's a collection of corrugated metal, and there's several wooden pallets. I am a hard-time Swamaco board that you can justify that that building cannot be met to meet the needs of the Historical Society as well as preserve that tree and not meet a reasonable solution on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, if anyone wants to look, this is the published book of the champion trees.
Anybody else? Just say your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Brian Gilliam, thirty-one forty-five Burton's Riverside Trail. I want to make the statement, please save that tree. That's all I have to say.
Hello. I'm Henry Vanahoville. I live at thirty-three thirty Wilderness Trail. I just wanted to say again that the Howard Swamaco Historical Society has, over the past, done a lot of work on the house and the barn. We just received an award for the wonderful work that was done on that barn by the Brown County Historical Society. So the things that they've done and the volunteer effort that's been put forth on this property so far has really done a good thing. It's been awarded. It looks good. If we were to bring the school here, it would look good. We have done all of the research and have the money collected to make the outside of the building look nice, so it won't be sitting there. Being an eyesore for the next year, all the exterior, not all, but enough exterior work will be done, that it's going to look nice. And as far as the inner side of the horseshoe, it's been COVID the last couple of years, but we intended to do a couple of things which were wrecked by COVID in that interior. But as far as wild parties, I think we were going to throw a tea party for the rentmeisters' remembrance. It's really, what I'm hearing is the speculation that there's going to be wild or inappropriate things going on, and I really have never seen such things. I think enough of a precedent has been set that that's just really not an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. I'm on files. I'm at one-two-eight-one-three Velp Avenue, and I'm at the property right next to the proposed location of the schoolhouse. I do, the current stake's location, I would prefer that they got farther back away from our patio. That's where we do a lot of our entertaining in the summertime and the nice weather months. Also, the lady over here spoke about some of like the trailer and wood, and that's temporary. That's going to be moved come summer. And also, it came to my attention that the approval for this, moving of this school zone, of the school was approved in closed session. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. Kager?
I believe so.
And then was it ever brought back up into open session to discuss approval?
They didn't make any additional discussion in open session.
So that way, isn't that, to me, that seems like that's a problem here, that this was approved in closed session and never brought back up in open session?
I believe there may have been ownership issues?
Yeah, it was before, before my time. I'm not sure why it went into closed session.
So does this, does this make, does that make this whole thing moot then? Has it started all over from the beginning since it was brought up into closed session, never brought back into open session?
No, we approve a lot of things in closed session.
Whenever, then doesn't, but if it's approved in closed session, doesn't it have to be brought up into open session?
Not necessarily.
This would be the approval in open session.
Okay. Other than that, I just say the current location where the stakes are, I think it should be farther back more so it doesn't impede on our front patio area, which we did spend considerable money on.
So that does help me because when I think about patio.
So throwing the tree there hides our patio.
Okay, so your patio is up front?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
So you'd rather see it further back?
Correct. So it doesn't impede on our area where we put our tables, and we do our outdoor fireplace and seating area to, you know, have dinner out there. We don't want to have our, you know, a schoolhouse fifteen feet away from our front patio. And the tree there, where of course it was no longer there, doesn't show the patio.
That helps me a lot because I was thinking patio on the back of your house.
Yeah, no, patio's on the front because of the small space in our backyard. Really, we'd only have very limited space in the backyard due to the lot line. So we built in the front window there on the side, on the corner of the house, southward.
Oh, yeah. Look at that.
If you look at Google Maps, Google Maps, that's very current. So that shows that. So we spent quite a money doing that, and that's where we do our entertaining in the summertime. So having a schoolhouse there and while we're trying out there to have dinner and have, you know, no matter what time of day it is, you know, what are people coming by, and what are you doing, you know, looking, you know, trying to have dinner and stuff, and people, you know, impeding, unless they're not impeding on our area because they're still on their property, but it's still.
So Andy, the current stakes are back eighty-five feet and off the line approximately fifteen feet, correct?
Correct.
Off the true property.
Correct.
Line, okay. And then from that point, so eighty-five feet, how big is the building again?
Thirty-six by thirty-six.
Okay, so then you're about a hundred and, a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and somewhere in there? Hundred and twenty? Okay.
You could do a field trip and go over there and everybody could.
Before I came over, I looked at the stake. I'd actually asked them.
Seeing like where our property is, you know, too, and how would it affect us? Any other questions?
Is sixty-five better than fifty-five feet?
Almost definitely.
Okay.
But I think it's at eighty-five right now.
But sixty-five would be better than fifty-five?
Prefer the eighty-five, but then you have to get rid of the tree. And to me, you know, my father's property, you can talk about champion trees, and it's relevant to this property, but my father's property in Green Bay had six trees that are champion trees in Brown County. To me, this is not really a champion tree, you know.
No, but it's got to start somewhere.
Yeah, but I mean, there are a lot of, you know, bigger trees in the Village of Swamaco. For this tree, a pine tree that's maybe fifty years old, that, you know, it's a semi-messy tree, so it's kind of irrelevant to get rid of a tree to please everybody. I know you like trees. You know, you said you're a greener, but to me, it's, it's a tree.
Anybody else have any further questions? It's actually good that, you know, that the Historical Society and the neighbors, and we're all in one room, working this out together. So this is good conversation. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Russ Roland, sixteen-oh-one Cardinal Lane, co-chairman of the moving of the building among the advisory board. I hope at the end of the evening, we have a decision, one way or another. There is probably close to a hundred hours gone in to this project in the recent past with a lot of, all donated hours by constituents of the Howard Swamaco area. We're dealing with visuals here, and part of the visuals that I recall, as Mary Stephan's mentioned. If I had a beautiful patio that I was concerned with and had a front yard, for years has had a collection of items there, I don't think it warrants taking down a very nice tree when the setbacks of this building are well within code. We've agreed to move the building back and closer to the driveway. If need be, as far as I know, the fence is over into the village property a certain amount of feet. And maybe it'd be that all the neighbors in the village and the Historical Society put up the maximum cedar fence that could be there, that they would see no people, nothing in the yard, which there won't be. And then there won't be any building necessarily to look at because a possible five or six foot or whatever the code allows, and all three groups could share in that expense, and we don't have to go through what we've gone through in the last few weeks. This is a professional project for our civic communities. Hopefully, fifty years, seventy-five years, my grandchildren, great-grandchildren can walk in the school and look at a piece of history, including a tree that may have a fence next door to buffer. We cannot afford with fifteen, twenty contractors that have been round-the-clock trying to coordinate the middle of May with weather to have this project delay over a fence, an encroachment, stuff in the front yard that you don't want to look at that's in your own front yard, and we're going to have a building that's going to look as nice as the rest of what we have. Apologize. Thank you.
So just a point of clarification. Who's fence? Not for you, sorry. Who's fence? Is that your fence?
It's our fence.
It's our.
We believe it's the Village of Swamaco put that fence up.
Okay, so it's our fence. Well, that would make sense of where it's at, then, because it wouldn't be directly in the lot line, then. It'd be on our side. So if that's the village's fence.
I don't know why we went to put it closer on the lot line, but I didn't install it. I believe discussing it with, actually, Ken was the one that brought it up. I didn't realize it was our fence until Ken brought it up, that the village, he was part of the crew that put that up. I think that came out of Whisper Ridge subdivision on some of our public lands when those split rail was taken out of that subdivision. There was some remnants that we had around here and had enough to complete that.
All right. So let me ask this, and actually, any other board members have anything to say? I can do that. Anybody else have anything to say?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
A motion to close public hearing or public comment? You got a second?
Second.
Second, Stossi Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Anybody have comments?
Well, like you said, we do have to decide tonight because there's a lot of things in place, and it has to happen. I just say, save that tree. And I don't, I don't think, I mean, the horseshoe is an option, but I don't think it's a good one. Honestly, I. My opinion.
I had talked with Administrator King.
I had talked with administrative king about putting the school in the horseshoe. And I thought about it as a couple of different reasons. One, you would actually know more readily that it was a historical society, because you have this old, uh, school there. But from listening from tonight, I guess that's not an option. It sounds like the culvert is taken care of. It sounds like it's not in a pole, not an opposition of having the building. It's just where in that little area are you going to have the building? So when I look at that, it's, it's always nice to have trees, because trees are a buffer. I would want it as close to the driveway as possible to give relief for the homeowners. Conversely, if this was a private piece of property, and even though they have their patio in the front, no one's saying that a private property couldn't have up into fifteen feet of the property line, which would be the same thing. So if the historical society has any option of moving it towards as close as you can to the driveway to give some relief, I mean, and then you can save the tree, I would probably be more inclined to agree with something like that.
I think you said twenty was okay, too.
Yes, I think anything greater than, if you slide it more than five feet to the south, there is a drainage way that comes off of that barn and drains to that driveway. If we come any further south, that grading is going to become difficult.
Any further than twenty or fifteen?
An additional five feet from where it's staked. So it's at fifteen, so if you come to twenty, I think they can comfortably make that work. If you come more than that, we're going to have to do some more, or they're going to.
And it sounds like the exterior of the school has been done to where it would look nice. In the MOU, it sounds like it'll be very clear of what the purpose of the building is going to be for, not to host more elaborate events like the barn is, so I think that will put some ease to what it's going to be used for, so.
To speak to moving it a little closer to the driveway there, I, I had suggested the same thing, and someone had brought up the fact that if you bring it closer than the steps that come out the front, we'll essentially step right out onto that driveway. So for kids, for people standing, you'd basically be standing in the driveway then, right when you came off of the steps, if you got much closer, so to leave a little bit of a room so you can come off the stairs and kids and people have a, a place to stand. I just say that, um, I was one of the members that suggested the eighty-five feet. I can tell you that I've planted more than ten thousand trees in my lifetime. I did an Emerald Ash Bore plan for Swamaco. I, I would be a qualified tree lover. It's just trying to come to some type of understanding, you know, trying to make everybody happy. I think in this instance, nobody's going to be completely happy. So whether it's eighty-five feet or sixty-five feet, I would be in agreeance with either one. I would like to see the tree stay, but if it has to be cut down to make it better for the neighbors, I could go that way, too. The eighty-five feet was just to make it so that, um, the Ryback property wouldn't have the building be in front of their home. So when they would sit out on their porch or look out, you know, you'd sit on the front, you'd be standing like the front door, you wouldn't see the school, essentially. So either, either way, I would be fine. But I was, uh, I was in agreement, uh, on planning and zoning with moving it to eighty-five feet, just to get it off of the sightline of the Ryback property.
Well, I, um, I think the twenty feet off the lot line is appropriate. I think, um, everyone seems to like that idea. I'm kind of for saving the tree myself, so if we could keep the sixty to sixty-five, whatever is needed there. That's, that's the route I look at, and as far as the MOU, um, it doesn't appear like they, they want to do anything other than use it for public meetings and, and some, you know, field trips, like for students and things. So I don't believe their intent is to rent it out for festivities.
All right, so I was diligently trying to take some notes from both sides of this. Um, and then trying to flip through our memorandum a little bit, just with the updates with schoolhouse inserted, inserted in certain areas. You know, if we, redo this memorandum of understanding, I prefer not to see some of this stuff in the memorandum of understanding, but in a separate amendment. So not really amending.
Addendum?
Addendum, amendment, addendum. Exhibit A, whatever terminology you want to use. I'd rather see this information about the schoolhouse on a separate document that references the MOU. Because I think it provides some clarity of setbacks, it provides, you know, all these additional things that we're talking about. Um, because right now, especially events is bridal, wedding ceremony, anniversary, birthdays. Um, these are all from ten AM to ten PM, four to five per year, and they insert at school terminology into that, um, special event section. So that wouldn't be an educational thing, that would be, uh, actual parties within that building. So that concerns me, and that's partly why I asked that question. So that's kind of talked about the rental of the building, uh, we talked about educational, use only. You know, we talked about the intent of the property usage, and that's in the, the MOU, and I think it's spelled out fairly clearly, whoever shared the paragraph. Trustee Snyder indicated, and they indicated that the culvert, culvert will be removed after the building is in. Tom, I was just giving you a hard time about the map, I know you don't have anything to do with that, but it says a function of Brown County. So get, you know, talk to someone. Donations, I did not get an answer on the donations. How, how many dollars have actually been raised to get this building moved from citizens throughout this area?
Guesstimate.
Guesstimate, close guesstimate.
Not counting in kind?
Not count, well, you can count in kind.
It happened to be about seventy-five thousand. Otherwise in cash, about fifty-eight, sixty thousand.
I mean, those are some decent numbers. I mean, that's, that shows commitment, um, that shows intent, I mean, it shows the, the want and the desire. One of the other things that we just explored real briefly, one of the last gentleman talked about a fence on the north side, redoing that fence. I don't know what, how you guys feel about redoing that fence and putting a little bit taller fence up to provide, you know, privacy, and that could be a compromise to leaving the tree and then buffering that corner so you're not seeing people around the school building, and I don't know your feelings on that. And then the last thing that didn't get brought up or, or got talked about briefly is additional buildings. You know, the, the motion that was made in zoning commission was no additional buildings. And for me, that's a difficult one, because I don't want to tie the hands of future boards, and we're talking future boards twenty years from now, if we put that in there. So I would hate to see that in there. Uh, it's very unique, all the things that you can do with older structures these days. And, and I think as this area gets, continue to get cleaned up, I mean, if they take down some of these garages from, from the home, the actual home that's on that site, you could put a different building over there, you could put other things in here, and I just don't want to tie future boards' hands. I think there needs to be discussion like this, if anything future's going to happen there, and any buildings are going to be put in. But I don't think we can tie future boards' hands and say, we're done, this is it. Because someone brought up natural disasters, someone brought up other things that can happen to some of these buildings, and if we say no more buildings, we do really tie any future usage of this property as a historical society, um, property. Those are just my, my thoughts. I guess really comes down to this. Everybody's okay with the twenty-foot offset on the north side, correct?
Well, is, no, Steve, you said that there's an issue with the twenty feet.
No.
No.
If you go more than twenty.
More than.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Then you're going to have issues with.
You guys are good at twenty foot off your property lines.
And the drainage way.
So now the question is eighty-five feet versus sixty-five feet, and sixty-five feet, they said it should be fine, putting that building there. So if you're going to save the tree, it's going to be sixty-five feet, if you're not going to save this, the building, it's eighty-five feet, you know, for me, I really don't have an opinion, I really don't.
I will not vote to kill that tree.
So, and then the last question is the additional buildings. You know, will someone put that in their motion or not, put that in their motion, and that's whoever wants to make a motion. And I think it's too early to talk about fences on the north side, but I think that should be an ongoing conversation. I think the other ongoing conversation, and Ruth and I had a, a good conversation about this two, three weeks ago. You know, one of the things, and I, and I don't think it was in any motion or anything like that, but they talked about putting a berm or berman, you know, the far back end behind the barn, so when their family is out on the back, that they don't see people in that barn. And so maybe that's something that, again, being good neighbors and working together, that, that if a berm needs to be put there with some trees or bushes or shrubs, you know, that's something that, that everybody can work together on and, and, you know. Again, you know who your neighbors are, and I'm talking to the historical society. You guys know each other's phone numbers, you guys can meet each other on site and talk about some of these little nuances, and, and I agree, some of them should be joint adventures. You know, put a little stake in the game and, and help out and make a berm or add trees to it or, or whatever, so. Uh, I don't think those are things that need to be part of any motion, but I think those are things that, you know, if a fence needs to go up, that you guys talk about and make it, and, and work it out. And then work it out with staff. I don't think those things need to be in a document that says it needs this or it needs that. I think where the building goes, that needs to be in a document, but these other things, I believe that you guys can work out together. Just like I work out things with my neighbors. It's, it's an neighborly thing to do. So is there anybody want to throw out a motion? Because I do agree, I mean, I understand the, the logistics that you guys have to deal with right now, getting that building moved, I mean, shoot, you're moving a huge building. So I understand the, the need for us to make a decision and move forward. I do want to make sure that in that motion, that someone indicates, and I think we all agreed on this, that that building should be used for educational, um, educational or small meetings only. And it shouldn't be included in the special events, like weddings and anniversaries and stuff.
So trustee Roden, just so I'm clear on what you're looking for, is it possible just to revise the current agreement and have a new section for the schoolhouse that says it's going to be used for educational purposes, e.g. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, specific groups? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any, any small public meetings?
Additional structure and, uh, to be used for education purposes or educational meetings. Because there's already a, a line near for the MOU to be modified to include additional structures, and for that structure to be used for.
Yeah, if you wouldn't want to, if you don't want to add a separate document and just want to modify this one.
I think it'd be easier just to make an edit, add another paragraph for that school.
Because we have to re-sign this on anyways, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We'd bring it back to the next meeting, and make some tweaks.
I, whatever our legal wants to do, or whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
Insert it or stand alone, I don't, I don't care. And I don't think anybody out here cares, do you? Semantics.
Is sixty-five better than fifty-five?
And I think that's a compromise, to some extent, that's been reached, I mean, it was reached in the zoning.
That was a suggested motion.
Suggested. That was planning and zoning suggestion, and that, you're correct, that was a, a compromise that evening, um, just trying to find, uh, a, 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 a good balance between what the neighbors are asking for and what the, um, historical society was asking for, but however, maybe we balanced it too far. Maybe taking out the tree was too much. And myself personally, I'm leaning to the fact of, uh, the tree is on the village property, which the historical society owns, and I put a little bit more weight, uh, towards that side of the argument.
Um, before we have a motion, actually, I'd like to read into the record, uh, President Van Rossum wasn't able to make it tonight, uh, he did give us a note and wanted us to read it, so I'll read it out loud here real brief. Good evening to the citizens of Swamaco and my fellow board members. After extensive discussion in the planning and zoning commission meeting last Wednesday, I'm convinced that the moving of the school as presented to you this evening is the best option for the adjacent neighbors and history acres in Swamaco. The plan is a compromise, given consideration to all the interested parties and their perspectives, as long as, as longtime community members with substantial family histories here. I support this, uh, compromise plan and hope you will support the vision of HSHS in the move, in the move as negotiated for future generations. Sky Van Rossum, village president.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the site plan for the placement of the Tremble School with the following conditions. Structure to be placed twenty feet of the northern property line and sixty-five feet of the Velp Avenue right of way.
Can you add to that motion about?
Number two.
Education?
Um, the memorandum of understanding is to be modified to include Tremble School uses for educational purposes.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by trustee Eckert, uh, to approve. Let me actually get the document here. Thank you, there is a lot here. Yeah. Motion to approve the site plan for the placement of the Tremble School with the following conditions. The structure to be placed twenty feet, uh, of the northern property line and sixty-five feet of Velp Avenue right of way. Uh, the MOU is to be modified and include additional, additional structure, and for the structure to be used for educational purposes only, uh, and modified, uh, as you see fit.
Second.
I got a second by trustee Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Give it a second here, whoever needs to leave.
Yeah. What's that? No, thank you. You're welcome.
Seth. I was ready.
I lost my, um.
He's doing good.
That's my agenda.
Just turned thirty-one.
I got too many.
It was his golden birthday.
No, I was, I was crossing stuff.
March thirty-first. Yeah, he's doing good. He is working at the Hotel Northland, and he's also at the Chilwell Museum.
Onto the next item. Administrative items, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero five, amending chapter twelve parking of the Swamaco Municipal Code, second reading, Mr. Kicker.
Thank you. So this is a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero five. This is the ordinance that would amend chapter twelve as it relates to the overnight parking restrictions. Uh, I did make the modification based off of, I believe trustee Roden requested that the date. I did make the modification based off of, I believe trustee Rodden requested that the date be removed. So now it reads that the village administrator has the authority to call off or suspend the seasonal parking ban ordinance, weather permitting, period. And so that is the current code for vote?
Very good. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash zero five, amending chapter twelve of parking of the Swamaco Municipal Code.
A motion on the floor by trustee Snyder to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero five, amending chapter twelve of the Swamaco Municipal Code as related to overnight parking. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Andrews. Roll call.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Snyder?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you. Nine B, ordinance twenty twenty-two zero eight, amending chapter eleven of the Swamaco Municipal Code, first reading, Minister Kicker.
Thank you. So this is actually a request from Deputy Pisani. The request is to amend section eleven of the municipal code, which is our nuisance section. And it's to essentially adopt the state statutes, one ninety-two dash thirty-two and one ninety-two dash three two one, which relate to trespassing on railroads, and then the other one is getting on and off of train cars. The reason for this is that the officers could then write municipal citations rather than haul somebody off to jail if they see somebody trespassing on railroad tracks. So that's the request from Deputy Pisani. This would be the first reading tonight. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'd come back for a potential vote at the next meeting.
Is there that much of a problem?
Yeah.
I don't think there's that much of a problem, but you, you want to be prepared for the first time that there is a problem, and it's, it's his request.
Okay.
You got my question there.
There's exactly why we have warning labels on bottles that probably shouldn't have warning, those types of warning labels, because somebody dumb did something at some point.
I eat hot pods.
If you're trying to hop a train out here, you're.
Well, there's directions on how to toast your Pop-Tarts too.
Yes. Very well. All right. I don't think there's any comments, any questions, makes sense. It just allows us to have more tools in our tool belt, basically. Thank you. All right. Public Works Department item, refuge hauling permit revisions. Mr. Smiths?
All right, thank you. The current village ordinance requires all refuse haulers to be licensed with the state of Wisconsin and permitted through the village. This is an annual permit set forth in the village's fee schedule, and the annual fee has been five hundred dollars for the last couple of years. A few haulers this year had some concerns with this and wondered why we had this fee and had this permit. So we took it to the Public Works and Utility Commission in March. And coming out of that, they believe the best route for the village to go at this time would be to remove this permit and fee. As the village doesn't necessarily do anything with the permit, there's no administrative responsibilities to the village. We don't submit it to the DNR or the state of Wisconsin for anything. It's just basically an internal permit that, that we have here on file. And of course, you know, it comes at a fee of five hundred dollars. And I think it, it definitely, you know, has an impact on the smaller hauling companies. Those are the ones that express the most concern with it and the most interest in of why we have this. You know, they only have a few contracts here in the village, so, you know, for them to pay this five hundred dollar fee really hurts their profit margins if they only have a few, few contracts, which, you know, that's up to them, that's their opinion. And if they should do business here, then if it doesn't make sense for them financially. But chapter six point two oh, I copied in here for permitting, we'd be looking to remove subparagraph B, basically the responsibility of the hauler to retain a permit through the village. They still have to be compliant and permitted through the state of Wisconsin, still carry their DNR ID number and stuff that's, you know, identified right on the vehicle that they, they used for normal business. So again, coming out of the Public Works and Utility Commission, their recommendation was to remove subparagraph B. Tonight would be a first reading only. And a potential second motion, once this is approved, would also have to be made for if the haulers that have submitted their payment for this year reimbursed or not. It was the, under the understanding coming out of the commission that it was kind of effective once this is approved, and if they had paid already, they probably weren't being reimbursed. But, you know, that's up to the board to make that decision.
How many permits do you do a year for this?
Usually about four or five. So right now, we've collected four permits of totaling two thousand dollars. So it's four, five, six, depending on the year.
So Andy, if I could chime in for a second. So we didn't advertise this as an ordinance, so we would still accept a motion to amend it if that's the direction of the board. We'd come back at the next meeting with a first reading, just to, to follow our own rules a little bit clearer. And then second, I really think that the board either needs to remove the fee effective this year and then reimburse those who have already paid, or let's come back at the end of the year, revise our fee schedule for next year, and then nobody pays it next year. I don't think it's fair to, to those who already paid this year that, oh, all of a sudden, we're going to not charge anybody else, and then we're not going to give you your money back either. That doesn't make much, much sense to me.
I, and this is a little bit of a gray area for me because I work for a local waste management company. I do not work for the Holland District. I work for our landfills. But in my opinion, is I, I don't really care either way, what, what you do as far as the ordinance is concerned. You know, I think some of the arguments the smaller haulers were utilizing is, is bogus. You know, it's, it's a permit, it's a fee, it's, they have all sorts of fees that they have to pay in permits they have to, they have to pay. You know, it's been years that, that the bigger haulers in this area have been paying these fees, year in and year out. And these local haulers or, or smaller haulers.